We're going to begin this evening with a ten second moment of silence, symbolic of the two hundred and fifty years of slavery, the ninety years of Jim Crow, the sixty years of separate but equal, and continuing years of racist and discriminating practices, laws, policies, structures, and institutions in which America has had her knee on the necks of people of color. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alenda Flowers, and I'm the president of the Carbondale Branch NAACP. Welcome to our virtual town hall on policing. I would be remiss if I didn't remind you to complete your 2020 census form if you haven't already done so, because each and every one of you represent about fourteen hundred dollars per year for the next ten years that Carbondale stands to receive if you complete your form, or stands to lose if you don't complete your form. Already completed your form, you say? It's okay to remind your family, friends, and neighbors to complete their form also. Another reminder, we have a little over one hundred days before the 2020 election. On the local level, specifically as it relates to the criminal justice system, we'll be, we will be electing judges and state's attorneys, persons with prosecutorial discretion, but even more will be on the ballot. Voting rights will be on the ballot, Supreme Court justices will be on the ballot, education, healthcare, jobs, and on and on, all on the ballot. So it's not enough for you to register and vote. You must help get your family, friends, and neighbors registered, educated, and to the polls on November third. Before we begin, I want to thank our presenters and panelists for beginning this important and much-needed discussion. Having the discussion is key to building relationships, to building trust, and building community. Just to be clear, on behalf of the Carbondale Branch NAACP, we are not anti-police, we are anti-police brutality. We are also for a more equal, equitable Carbondale community for all of Carbondale citizens. After all, community is why we're all here this evening, and where we may not agree on what may be best for the Carbondale community, we can for sure disagree without being disagreeable. I hope as we consider community, we can all agree that we must consider the interests and needs of persons within the community who have been and continue to be adversely impacted in every sector of society by hundreds of years of intentional, structural, systemic, institutional racism and discrimination as we move to form our new normal and our more equitable and just community. So, in the words of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., where do we go from here? Hopefully, we will come up with some possible solutions during our discussion tonight. A few housekeeping items before we get started. If you have questions or comments, the chat and question and answer functions are open at the bottom of your screen. Please limit your questions to those that are general in nation, nature. The panelists cannot answer questions regarding personal or individual cases this evening. We received a number of questions in advance of tonight's town hall. We ask for your patience as we try our very best to get to as many questions as possible. We want you to know that the branch has committed to having a town hall part two to continue this discussion in the very near future, where we will also address any questions that we missed this evening. And now, I introduce our moderator for the evening, the Reverend Alfred McGowan, the Carbondale Branch NAACP Education Chairperson, the Associate Pastor at the Rock Hill Missionary Baptist Church, and teacher at Carbondale Middle School, Reverend McGowan.
Thank you, Dr. Flowers. At this time, I'm going to introduce some of our panelists, going to start with Teresa Haley. Teresa Haley is the president of the Illinois State Conference of the NAACP Branch. She is... I think we just kind of jumped there. There we go. She's the first female elected president, serving her third term as president of the Springfield Branch NAACP, serving her fifth term in 2020. She received the NAACP Image Award as Activist of the Year. In 2020, she also received the Frontiers International Community Service Award. 2019, she was awarded as Springfield's First Citizen Award Community Activ, activist, excuse me, advocate, sorry. She's a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and she's been appointed to the Justice Equity and Opportunity Initiative Transition Committee under Governor J.B. Prisker, Teresa Haley. Our second panelist is Bob Moore. Bob Moore is the Illinois State Conference of NAACP Branch Criminal Justice Chairperson. You see, Mr. Moore spent over forty years in law enforcement, a native of Mississippi and a veteran who moved to Illinois, where he began his career as a state trooper in Rockford. He went on to be appointed as a U.S. Marshal. You must understand that there are fewer than one hundred who have served at a time, and each one is appointed by the president. Moore is rightfully prideful of his distinguished career. He has spent much of his time in retirement sharing the stories of black U.S. Marshals, a history, he says, was previously untold. He wrote the book called The President's Men: Black United States Marshals in America. Moore is now working as a police consultant, currently advising the city of Springfield on how to better recruit and retain minorities, how to better community relationship program. Mr. Bob Moore. Our next panelist is Mitch Davis. He's the Hazelcrest Illinois Police Chief. He served twenty-nine years in law enforcement. He's the president of the South Suburban Association of Chief of Police. He's the first vice president of the Illinois Association of Chief of Police. He will be the first black president in the eighty-year history. He's the Secretary of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. He's on the Board of Directors of the International Association of Chief of Police, and he's a proud member of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Mr. Mitch Davis, or Chief Mitch Davis. And then our very own Chief Jeff Grubbs. Chief Grubbs, twenty-nine-year veteran of the Carbondale Police Department. In September 2020, he holds a bachelor's and master's degree from SIUC. He's a graduate of both the 235th Session of the FBI National Academy and the Seventy-seventh Session of the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Programs in Quantico, Virginia. Chief Grubbs is an executive board member of the Illinois Association of Chief of Police, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, MTU-15, and is vice chair of Jackson County 911, Carbondale's own chief, Grubbs. At this time, we're going to have the reading, the explanation, and the purpose of the shared principle by Bob Moore.
Okay, can you hear me? Good. My name is... Got one more step to go. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The purpose of the ten principles is that if we have started a historic partnership between the Illinois NAACP and the Illinois Chiefs of Police, and it was designed to build trust between the black community and the police to fight and eliminate police brutality, excessive force, and to stop killing of black men. As a result of the Ferguson-Mazura incident involving Michael Brown, the Illinois Chiefs came to the Illinois NAACP and to ask the question, simple question, of what can we do to improve trust within our communities? What is it that we can do to stop the killing of black men so that it was not come to Illinois? So, those are the questions of which we have been asking for the last four years. And as a result of the, that particular question, and as a result of the partnership of which we are so proud of, the, there were ten principles that were developed that have been, we have been traveling the state of Illinois jointly, teaching our citizens and our police departments together. For the first time, we're teaching them together, the principles of which we expect behaviors of our police to be acting, behaviors of our citizens to be acting. And so, as we move down this next few minutes here, we're going to rapidly go through these ten principles, and I will give some comments as I go through. We'll try to spend at least about one minute per, per, per principle. I'm so pleased to be returning to Carbondale. Ed Wazinski and I came back in February and November of last year to present a town hall meeting where we had about fifty people there, and we were so proud to see that you all were taking this thing very seriously. We will start with number one principle, and it is one of the most important principles that, that we will ever have. It says that we value life of every person and consider life to be the highest value. That's the principle number one of which we all across Illinois are adopting. We're telling everybody in Illinois that life, every life is important, and we consider it to be of the highest value, and that we will not be taking someone's life without pure justification. Principle number two, all persons should be treated with dignity and respect. And as we move across the state, we find that people often resonate this, the, this particular principle and say, all I want to be done is have, be treated with dignity and respect. And every person in America, every person in the world wants to have, to be their life to be treated, they want to be what, regardless if it's a police, regardless if it's a citizen, but especially the police. Police has to learn that all persons need to be treated with dignity and respect. Principle number three, we reject discrimination towards any person based upon race, ethnicity, religion, color, nationality, eminent status, sexual orientation, gender, disability, and family status. So, we, if we look at this particular slide, we see Rosa Parks. We know what role she played in, in our, in our American society, where we were relegated to the back of the bus, and, and to say, as today's thing, we've had our knees on our, on our neck. So, at, at that time, from relegation to the back, to getting the knees off our back, these particular principles will help us move through these type of situations. Principle number four, we endorse the six pillars of the President's Task Force on the twenty-first century. As you all know, that the President Obama, when he was in office, he promulgated a task force to look at policing in America, and they came up with some dynamic recommendation. But the first six pillars of that was to build trust and to rebuild trust, and we have to continue to do that. But one of the things that we found, that there's a lot of things that destroy trust, and, and the killing in Minnesota, the killings in Georgia, all of that has, had put a damper on our building trust within our communities. So, we have to not only talk about building trust, but we have to talk about things that destroy our trust, and we have to, we have to hold people accountable, have to hold people accountable that it's destroying the trust within our communities. Principle number five, we endorse the four pillars of procedural justice. This is the program that, that we, the police are taught, and citizens should be also be aware of the talk, that, that there are four pillars that we talk about being fair, that's all people want, they want to be treated fairly, they want to have their voices heard, and definitely want transparency. So, just as an example, if, if there's an incident that occurs in your community, and you have a body cam that, that's recording that, you, you need to be transparent. You need to be transparent in releasing that information so it will calm the community, it will help the community, and you also have to be impartial. Impartiality is so important. So, all these things that we look at, one through five at this point in time, is, is typically important. Principle number six, we endorse the values inherent in community policing. We want to call your attention to community policing, really, I want you to think in terms of what I'm saying. Community policing involves a partnership, and we, that means you can't be in different lane, you can't be in lane one and lane two and have a partnership, you got to get in the same lane. You got to have a partnership like we are doing today, like we have with the Illinois Chiefs. We have a partnership that's been in effect for the last four years, and that's why we have made the progress that we've made. But we must engage our officers outside of enforcement activity. That's one of the most difficult challenges that we find, because we start addressing the union issues and say that the union has got to become a part of the community. They've got to become a part of, 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 of saying that they can no longer afford to have these type of mistrust things going on in our community. Collaborative problem solving, we all have to come to the table together. We can't solve a problem if you in one table and I'm at another. We all have to come to the same table in order to solve community problems.
Hey, Bob.
Yes?
Can, can we get some of these principles?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You were doing so well, we did not want to interrupt you, but principle number seven, relationship matters.
Yeah, good place for you to come in.
Okay. Principle number seven, relationships matter. We want to make sure that we're developing strong and ongoing relationships between our police departments and our communities of color, especially black communities. We want to start at the leadership level all the way down to the street level. We want to make sure that we're diminishing and eliminating racial tension, because we know in America it is a well and alive today. I know Mitch had to go off and come back on, so I will continue. All citizens need better understanding of the law. I am not a law officer, so I'm going to turn this back over to Marshall.
Yes, we have, we, we have, as we move around the state, and we move and talking to people across the state, and as we educate our citizens, we're finding that our citizens really has a need to be educated about the law. For instance, there, there's a, I often ask my audience, if, if you get stopped by a police officer, and he or she asks you to get out of the car, and I ask the question, do you have to do that? And, and ninety percent of the people say, no, I don't have to get out of the car. That's wrong. They, we, these are just simple things, the things that happen at traffic stops, or the things that get us in trouble. So, we have got, we're saying to our communities, we're saying to the police department, we have got to better get a better understanding of the law so that we can avoid most of these issues of which we are having to come up against. Back to you.
Okay, principle number nine and ten, I'm going to turn them over to you, Chief Davis.
All right, thank you so much, ma'am. We support diversity in police departments and law enforcement profession. In, in our communities, we want to make sure that our police departments are reflecting the demographics of the areas that, in which we serve, and it's a responsibility that both law enforcement has to take in addition to the police departments. So, one thing that we're saying is, that we're telling folks is be a part of the solution. We understand that there are challenges in law enforcement, and we need for those who are of the right mindset, whether they be black, white, or whatever, to be coming into law enforcement to help us to make effective change. That's principle number nine. Principle number ten.
Very important.
Go ahead. De-escalation training. We believe de-escalation training should be required to ensure the safety of the community and its officers, and de-escalation training, a lot of our departments have been doing that, and we do, we, we do de-escalation as a part of our, our work in law enforcement in general. We just have to make sure that we're doing it consistently, and especially when it comes to situations where someone's life has to be, or can possibly be taken, and taking somebody's life is only a last resort as it pertains to any level of use of force as law enforcement.
Madam President, I'd like to go back to number one, because I'd like to hear your comments on, on number one, because you so adroitly expresses those on number one. We'd like to hear your voice on that.
We do value life of every person, and we want everybody's life to be taken as the highest value. One of the things that we worked on, and we went back and forth when we were developing these principles, to say, does your life matter? Today, we're saying that black lives matter, and they definitely matter, when for so many years with racism throughout this country, black lives have always been dismissed. So, Black Lives Matter is very important when it comes to valuing every person's life, and we want everyone to be, to go home safe at the end of the day.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moore, President Haley, and Chief Davis. At this time, we're going to have Chief Grubbs come, and he's going to talk about the Carbondale's Department disposition in regards to these ten shared principles. I encourage all of our listeners to listen closely, because some of your questions will be answered as Chief Grubbs talks about these ten shared principles. Chief Grubbs?
Thank you, Reverend. Good evening. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your interest in your community. Thank you for your interest in your police department, and thank you for the thoughts I hope you will share with us this evening on how to better improve both. It's certainly an honor and a privilege to be here before you this evening, to not only represent the men and women of the City of Carbondale Police Department, but as part of the community itself, as this is and always will be, the community's police department. A community policing, it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Community policing is, and always has been, a priority of mine, and it will continue to be made a priority of the police department. I truly believe there are many important reasons why our community should work together, and very hard to bring a sense of community and police-community relations to the forefront. And regardless of what may occur nationally, there is certainly no reason why we can't set or choose to set the standard locally by doing just that. And certainly, as I often say, it's important for me that you know that your police officers are some of the most highly trained, well-educated, dedicated officers that you will find anywhere, and I assure you that they truly care about the community they police and the level of professionalism that they display on a daily basis. It is certainly my hope that each of us are able to gain a better perspective on the varying issues and views regarding each of the topics we will be discussing this evening, not only as individuals and, but as a community, and more importantly, how to better address these issues to be able to move our community forward together. Now, a few backgrounds on the ten shared principles doctrine, as you know, substantial agreement by the Illinois Chiefs Association and the Illinois NAACP State Level Association occurred in January and February of 2018. And as the Chiefs Association built on the initiative through our association, I was one of the first around the state to sign my pledge of affirmation, affirmation on those shared principles around the spring of 2018. Later, the Carbondale NAACP and its police department brought the statewide conversation to the Irma Hayes Center in December of 2018, and at the time, we were one of only around nine communities to do so. Significant credit goes to Dr. Linda Flowers, our Carbondale NAACP president, for her effort in helping to secure that World Cafe for Carbondale. At the event, officers from all ranks of our department, along with Chief Newman and members of the SIU Police Department, as well as Sheriff Burns and members of the Jackson County Sheriff's Office, joined the conversation in partnership with our Carbondale NAACP, as well as in the interested community members who were in attendance that evening. The conversation was moderated by the Executive Director of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, Mr. Ed Wazinski. Ed's not able to join us tonight, but we're certainly honored to have Chief Mitchell Davis of the Hazelcrest Police Department with us here. As you heard earlier, Chief Davis is the first vice president of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, and he will be sworn in as the president. and he will be sworn in as the President of our statewide organization next year. So we're proud to have you here Chief, thank you. Chief Robert Moore, who is also with us and we've heard from, was there that evening as one of the moderators at the Carbondale World Cafe. Chief Moore's been a recognized leader in law enforcement and a leader in the NAACP for over forty years. And it's certainly always to have, and an honor to have him with us and we appreciate him being here again this evening. Now during our Carbondale World Cafe, we certainly had good conversation there at the NAACP or at the Irma Hayes Center. And it was certainly a very well-attended and received event. Casual conversations since then have occurred between myself and Dr. Flowers on occasion regarding a joint affirmation on the shared principles. And that was followed by two additional World Cafes in 2019 at two other locations around the state. And then at the end of June of this past year, I certainly had the honor to travel to Peoria for a meeting with the statewide NAACP membership and the Illinois Chiefs membership. That meeting was facilitated by Lieutenant Governor Juliana Stratton, Carbondale NAACP President Dr. Linda Flowers, and others from our Carbondale branch attended that meeting as well. While there, I had the pleasure to meet NAACP State President Teresa Haley. And it's certainly an honor to have her here with us this evening and we appreciate that Teresa. The purpose of the Peoria meeting was to host a World Cafe Summit. And that was by design, bringing the participants from ten cities where the events were held to explore the what's next and the how can we regarding the implementation of the shared principles across our entire state. Both prior to and since my adoption of the shared principles in 2018, the Carbondale Police Department has focused our officers in training in the following areas. If not the first, we were certainly among the first departments in this entire state to train our entire department in de-escalation beginning in 2016, principle number 10. We're currently working on bringing that training back to Carbondale to retrain the entire department once again. Second, more advanced training, even than de-escalation in some respects, has also occurred and that includes crisis intervention team training, of which we have seventy percent of the department state certified at this point in time. CIT's only held once annually in our area and it's a week long. So it takes longer to get everyone certified because of it only being offered annually. But our goal again is to have every one of our officers from the bottom all the way to the top, including me, crisis intervention team trained. With that, we began with our Patrol Division, since they are the most visible and have the most interactions with people in crisis and have continued along that goal again of training every member of the department. Our third primary focus area in police training is having all of our officers state juvenile officers certified. One of the key recommendations which came from a 2016 community forum here in Carbondale was a focus on youth and in particular at-risk youth. Having our entire department certified as juvenile officers gives them better tools to be able to relate to and work with the youth in our community. In addition, training is in line with and one hundred percent compliant with the fourteen general state mandated training categories for all officers in the state of Illinois. Those include, among others, categories such as use of force, officer wellness, mental health awareness. But the training also has strong ties, if you look closely, to the shared principles themselves regarding requirements for training in procedural justice and human rights. So as we gather here this evening, I was very, very pleased to have learned from Dr. Flowers just two days ago that she would be representing the Carbondale NAACP Branch by signing together with me affirmation of substantial agreement of the shared principles between the Carbondale NAACP and the Carbondale Police Department here in front of all of you this evening. This is truly an honor that I will never forget. We've worked very hard to get here and I will certainly never, ever take it for granted. So I appreciate the effort on that that will occur here shortly in our program. What's next? Well, it's my hope we will continue to work together to build and rebuild trust part of the principles themselves and continue to have an even better partnership with the NAACP. For the police department, it also means memorializing the joint affirmation of the shared principles into our former, formal policy and procedure manual. And you know, we also value the relationships we have with our local NAACP, but also all of our other community groups, as well as everyone who calls Carbondale home. And we certainly feel a sense of responsibility in helping to keep everyone safe. So we will continue to work hard, we will continue to listen, and we will certainly continue to learn. Lastly, it's important for me that you know that we not only want the support of the community, but we need your support. Moving forward requires all of us, as we have got to recognize that we are certainly all in this together. And together is how we must proceed in order to better serve our community and move it forward once again together. So I thank you.
Thank you Chief Grubbs. At this time, we are going to have the signing of the shared principles. So I'm going to read the proclamation as the Chief and the President, the local President, Dr. Flowers are signing that proclamation. And it reads, whereas the Carbondale Branch NAACP is part of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, established in nineteen oh nine following race riots in Springfield, Illinois, the Illinois Association of Chief of Police was established in nineteen forty-one, whereas the NAACP advocates for smarter, results-based criminal justice policies to keep our community safe, including an end to racial disparities at all levels of the systems. And whereas the NAACP principal objective is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. And whereas the Illinois Chiefs declare in their vision statement, the association values compassion, integrity, accountability, fairness, professionalism, innovation, continuous improvement, diversity, and inclusion. And whereas both organizations acknowledge that there are historical reasons for some mistrust between police and communities of color. And whereas both organizations have a mutual passion for defending and protecting the civil rights of all citizens and in keeping our community and citizens safe. And now be it therefore resolved that we affirm, that's the NAACP and the Chief, the following principles regarding the relationship between law enforcement and the people that serve, the people they serve in Carbondale, Illinois. Thank you for this momentous signing of this agreement. At this time, I'm going to introduce the rest of our panelists as we move towards our question and answer session. Mike Carr, known to Carbondale because of his time on the Carbondale Elementary School Board, as District, excuse me, Carbondale Elementary School District Ninety-five School Board, is the Jackson County State's Attorney. He was elected in twenty twelve. He served three terms as an elected school board member. He was on the District Policy Committee for over a decade and was elected as a member of the Carbondale School District Ninety-five Hall of Fame. In prosecuting, in his prosecuting career that has spanned over three decades, Mr. Carr has also served as an Assistant State's Attorney in Williamson County, First Assistant State's Attorney in Jackson County, and Assistant United States Attorney for the Southern District of Illinois. Welcome, State's Attorney Mike Carr to the program. Next, we have Dr. Randy Burnside. Dr. Burnside is, is on the Fireman Police Board of Commissioners. He's the Director of Med Prep for the Southern Illinois University School of Medicine. He's originally from Philadelphia, Mississippi, and his PhD is in Political Science from the University of New Orleans. He's a nationally recognized consultant on leadership, cultural competence, and implicit bias with more than ten years of teaching and training in these areas. Currently resides in Carbondale with his wife Rhonda and his son Christopher, where he's actively involved in the community serving through the Prince Hall Masons and his service on the Carbondale Board of Fire and Police Commissioners as well as the Carbondale Planning Commission. Welcome to our program, Dr. Burnside.
Thank you Reverend McGowan.
Next, we have Nancy Maxwell. She's the Criminal Justice Chairperson for the Carbondale Branch NAACP. Ms. Maxwell is a former Cook County Deputy Sheriff, Mounds Police Officer, Tri-County Correctional Officer, and a private detective. She now is the NAACP Criminal Justice Chair, Rape Crisis Counselor and Advocate at the Women's Center and founding member of Carbondale United Incorporated, which has been either helping with or leading many of the demonstrations in our area recently. We welcome Ms. Maxwell to our program. And then we have Michael Coleman. Michael Coleman is a twenty-one-year-old social and political activist. He majors in Political Science at SIU Carbondale. He's the organizer of the March for George Floyd, that was George Floyd, excuse me, that was held recently, where over a thousand people were in attendance. He's been on state call panels about justice, police reform with members of Congress and public defenders in Illinois. We welcome Michael Coleman to the program. At this time, we're going to have a question and answer session with the latest group of panelists as well as our previous panelists from before. I'm asking that each panelist be succinct with your, in regards to your question. There will be some questions that multiple people will be called on because of our time restraints. If you will get to the heart of the answer as quickly as you possibly can and we'll get to as many questions as we can. Remember, if you are looking in online and you did not submit your questions previously, you can type them in the chat box, you can type them in the Q and A box, and we will get to your questions if not today in part two of this Town Hall Policing Meeting. We're gonna begin with Reverend Swims and he's going to start with the first question. Reverend Swims?
Thank you Reverend McGowan. The first question is this. What are the accountability, accountable measures in place for officers that violate one of the shared principles? I'll read it again. What are the accountable, excuse me, measures in place for officers that violate one of the shared principles?
Chief Grubbs?
Actually, Chief Mitchell and I, Chief Davis and I actually had a conversation about this this morning, among others. And you know, the shared principles document was not tied to or intended to be regarding disciplinary action. You know, they are certainly a foundation for our policy development and certainly in developing a relationship. I think they're, they're words and ideas and concepts that we should all adopt as people. And, but we certainly do have those tied to progressive disciplinary actions for infractions of, of our normal policies and procedures and our rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you Chief. Ms. Brown, do you have a question from the chat room?
Yes, I do. Okay, so one of the questions from the chat rooms are, has a city considered requiring police officers to live in the Carbondale community? Why or why not?
I'm gonna direct that question to the Police Commissioner, Dr. Burnside.
Yes, so there, since I've been on the commission, there have been discussions about that. And part of the problem is, is when you place that type of limit, you also limit the people who will serve on the, on the force. And so by implementing that type of limit, what a lot of locales have found is that they do not have individuals who are qualified to serve on the force to fill the positions that they have available. And so being able to have a broader pool to select from oftentimes gives you the opportunity to also perhaps to diversify that pool as well. And so if you start to limit that pool to some degree, you also limit the potential of other things that you want to see in the pool. And so there has been discussion of that. And I think that's really the foundation of why we still are doing it the way that we've been doing it for quite a while.
Dr. Burnside, could I follow up with that? If someone is hired, are they required to move into Carbondale? Let's say they were hired from Cardville, is there a requirement that says once you become a police officer, you didn't have a year or something to move into Carbondale or?
The Chief can help me out with this, but I don't think that there is, I don't think that that requirement exists, but I'm not certain of that. So Chief Grubbs, could you address that?
There is contractual language that allows the officers to reside outside of the residency requirement while they're on their probationary status and being trained to ensure that if they don't work out in the position or the position doesn't work out for them, that they haven't had to have sold or moved and purchased within the residency requirement itself. What we typically find though is, is that most of the officers that we hire are already in the nine-mile residency requirement for police officers and other general city employees. And so it doesn't come up very often for those that would be hired and, and were out of the residency requirement, other than some of our lateral program hires that have relocated back here from other areas because they have ties to the region.
Thank you Chief. Dr. Lacy, would you give us a question from the Q and A?
I need help from the host to show my face.
Hit the stop video, it should be muted.
The host had it.
Oh, okay.
The host has to do it.
Gotcha, all right. There we.
I think, yeah, okay. Excuse me, one question that I have that came from the Q and A is directed at a specific panelist who has not yet spoken. It is to Mike Carr. It says, please discuss your record as related to mass incarceration and the war on drugs. Hello?
Mr. Carr, are you there?
You're muted Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I of course happen to be one of the longest-serving prosecutors in the state of Illinois. I've served almost forty years now. I served as an Assistant State's Attorney in Williamson and then here and ultimately in the United States Attorney's Office. And I have seen firsthand various administrations, especially when I was sitting in the United States Attorney's Office and and various programs, including the War on Drugs. That was the Reagan Administration and, and then the Violent Crime Initiative, which followed it with another investigation. And I think that, well, my record, I think that, that if one looks at a record in terms of convictions, I think that, that I certainly done very well with that in terms of, in terms of what the country has experienced, though, on the war on drugs. I think that we realized initially going after crack cocaine when there was really no significant difference in terms of the, the addiction rate with, between that and just regular powder cocaine had an adverse effect on, on minority groups, especially African-Americans. And I think that, you know, when you, when you talk about the war on drugs, and really, it started off as being a, and the idea was that this, there is an attendant violence that goes along with the drug deals. So the way that we can get at it is through this war on drugs. And to a large extent, initially, I think that that is the involvement that US Attorney's Offices had in it. There were changes in administrations and, and to be honest, it appeared to me during those administrations into a lot of career federal prosecutors, that statistics drove the, the offenses instead of violence. And so I think that in, in terms of what I've done and what I, what I've tried to emphasize, especially in the State's Attorney's Offices, we want to go after the people that, that are violent to other people. Drugs are not crimes of violence and, and there is clearly disparate impact on, on African-Americans in the, in the prosecution of those cases. And, and there are societal problems that, that cause, you know, the involvement with drugs. And those transcend what prosecutors do, whether they're federal or, or state prosecutors. Actually, as a federal prosecutor, I, you know, I guess you can prosecute, you can get up at four o'clock in the morning and spend your whole life getting ready for, for a closing argument. I, I thought that at some point I wanted to be involved where I thought I could make a difference, and it's one of the reasons I joined a school board. I think that there is no question, but that the way for people to get out of this cycle of, of trying to adjust for poverty and, and no family life and, and nobody that, that is providing guidance to them is education. And I learned that, funnily early, that communities need to invest in our kids. They need to invest in after-school programs. I had the advantage, and my kids had the advantage of learning how to read before they went to kindergarten. We live in a, in a community where a lot of kids don't have that, that benefit. So it was important for us on the school board to look at early preschool programs, and we, we did that in Carmel. And it's also important that we learn, that we make efforts to provide activities for kids that may not have the same kind of privileges that, that others have, and especially in after-school programs. When you have sixty percent of a population in your school district that's on lunch program, it's pretty important that we, as a community, look for after-school programs that provide snacks. And one of the most important things for success in school that I learned on the school board is that kids need to read at grade level, and they need to do that by the second grade to be successful. And if we know that, and we know, and it's one of the reasons that I'm very supportive of a volunteer program, the I Can Read Program, if we know that as a community, that should be a top priority. Again, I've been involved in the, in the prosecution of drug cases. And, and prosecutions of drug cases just for, just for statistics, I don't, you know, I don't agree with. But I, I can tell you that I think that where there's a tendency of violence, we have an obligation to the public to do everything that, that we can to try to move on those cases. I've handled drug cases that, murder cases in communities where the witnesses would not testify against the murders.
Mr. Carr, I'm going to cut you off there.
Okay.
Move on to our next question. Reverend Swims? Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Yes, sir, this is a three-part question. It says, "Is it possible to have mentorship counseling programs for local police officers and children start in grade school and hire? If yes, could we take some of the yearly police budget to help support this program in its infancy stage? If not, why not?" I'll read it again. "Is it possible to have a mentorship counseling program for local police officers and children start in grade school and hire? If yes, could we take some of, could we take some of the yearly police budget to help fund the program in its infancy stage? If not, why not?"
Chief Davis, I'm going to ask you to enter in on this one, and then I'm going to come to Commissioner Burnside and Chief Grubbs. Chief Davis?
Well, absolutely.
And in the Hazel Crest area, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, those type of programs are essential to developing relationships and for the partnership of giving back to the community from law enforcement professionals. What has to happen is from the leadership within the respective organizations, it has to be something that's important. I'll share with you real quick, it's something that just happened yesterday. So we're right outside the South Side of Chicago. We got all these different suburbs in the area I'm in, in the south, in the south suburbs, there's a lot, very large African-American population. Community right next to mine is a mentoring group, just like you're talking about, that's having an event next Saturday. Called and said, "Hey, chief, can I get somebody from your department to come talk to these young folks, they're young black men in this mentoring group next Saturday?" Obviously, we do that all the time, not a problem. He says, "You know what, I'm so grateful for you doing this." He says, "I called the community next door, which is a much larger community than mine, and I, I called the chief." And this community is probably sixty, fifty, sixty percent African-American. Says, "I called that department and asked if they could send somebody out to, to speak with these young people, and they said, 'We don't do things like that.'" So I know the chief of that department, and for me, it wa, I wasn't surprised at all at that response, but I was disgusted by the response because how do you, not just in this day and age, but in any day and age, say that we don't do things like that? But there are leaders out there that are of that mindset. So, yes, it absolutely can happen. I, I don't, I'm not going to take up all three parts of the question, but, and it's essential that those things do happen. And then it's up to the citizenry, because once, see, I guarantee you, the people in that community don't know that that chief and his department are responding to those requests like that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burnside, Dr. Burnside?
Well, I, I think I agree with, with everything that Chief Davis said, and I don't have a lot to add to that. I think, from my position on the Fire and Police Commission, I know that I would support that, and I would hope that other commissioners would support that as well. And so we don't have, as a commission, we don't control the police budget. And so we, we don't have a say in kind of how the budget is allocated. But I do know that as a commissioner, I would support something like that, and I would hope that other commissioners would do so as well.
Could you enlighten the citizen on who does have control of the budget for that type of thing?
Well, that would be worked out between the city and the chief. I mean, I don't know the exact particulars that involve in that. I think that the city manager, Gary Williams, or Chief Grubbs could speak to that.
Okay, and I failed to introduce earlier our city manager, Gary Williams. I apologize, Mr. Williams. It's kind of going in robotic mode and didn't see it pop up on the PowerPoint, but I apologize if you're there. I do want you to enter in on this question. Chief Grubbs?
Yes, I mean, that, that is absolutely something that I've been a supporter of for a long time. And certainly, it's how do we find the mechanisms and the resources to be able to make that happen? For those of you that know me and have had conversations with me, I certainly support school resource officer programs, wherein those could be the police personnel that are primarily partnering with the schools, not just to provide safety, but also to provide that type of mentoring ability and bringing in police officers on occasion. I certainly, you could probably help me, Reverend. I, I'm, I, I cannot remember the name of, of the high, of the basketball coach there at the middle school. But certainly, if, if you could help impart that, he invited a, a group of police officers and challenged us to, you know, a basketball game with those eighth-grade young men. And, and we lost miserably, so, you know. But I think that maybe there was some apprehension on both sides before the game started. But I think by the time it got over with, there had been some relationship building and certainly some recognition of who each of us are on both sides, right? Both of those teams. I think that, you know, we also have a community service officer program which employs late high school and early college students that we could maybe shift into those roles to help be mentors, given police staffing levels and calls for service to be able to, to supplement that program if there's no additional, you know, staffing. I also think a big partnership there is with the Boys and Girls Club because they have after-school programming at all of our elementary schools now. And so, or, or it's held mainly at the, at the, at the middle school at this point. And certainly, we're big partners with them on programming, and we could certainly find a way to make that side of those things happen. You know, we are in, doing our dare instruction, and, and certainly, we provide a layer of support and protection for those schools as they begin their commutes to school in the morning and as they depart in the evening. And so that's kind of where I'm at and kind of what we're doing and what we maybe could be able to do. And I'd be happy to enter into conversations with the, the elementary school board and the superintendent and principals that, that manage those buildings to make that happen as best we can.
Considering the recent march to ask the resource officers be removed from the high school, would you be open to discussing other ways that budget money could be used to come about some community-type activities that could get, have a getting-to-know-each-other type of session?
Yeah, I think that's a broader conversation, not just with the community, but certainly with, you know, the school administrators who have, you know, certain roles and responsibilities that they want those school resource officers to, you know, be a part of and, and take care of. And, you know, I just want to say, we have a very popular, great officer that's in that school right now, at the high school, building relationships. And, you know, to be clear, we do not get involved with student discipline. Those decisions are made by the school administrators. We are certainly there to assist them and provide levels of support. And, you know, if you look at our arrest records, they have not went up since we've employed school resource officers in that building.
Mr. Williams?
In terms of the mentoring question, um, yeah, I, I agree with everything that's been said. The chief and I have spoken about this in the past. I think it would be a great opportunity for the community, something we would be interested in. And, and I think we also would have interest in it because it could be a way to, you know, provide opportunities for, for kids in Carmel to, you know, pursue a career in law enforcement and stay here in the community. So, yeah, we would be interested in, we would make every attempt to reallocate funds in the budget to make that happen.
Okay.
Reverend McGowan, can I say something real quick?
I'm sorry, who was that?
It's Chief Davis.
Go ahead, T.
Real quick, couple of quick points. Some of the greatest mentoring is free. The greatest mentor, or yours, now I won't say it's free, but it's already being paid for. The greatest mentoring, and this comes back to leadership within your organization, is the day-to-day interactions that our law enforcement people have with young people. Not when they're coming to their house to arrest their mom or their daddy or their brother, but when they see them walking down the street and they stop to engage them in productive conversation. And they see them playing basketball, they get out and shoot a couple hoops with them so that they have that natural relationship. And I've worked in the schools, I worked in the schools for all twenty-five years as a liaison officer. It's not that you have police officers in school, it's what type of program and what officers you have in schools. There are some officers who have no business having contact with kids, and they shouldn't be working in schools. And sometimes, contractual obligations, they're able to do that. But if you've got the right officers and the right programs with them in the schools, I, I gotta say, I have got thousands of kids that I have had just so many great relationships with that I run into as adults that thank me for some of the interactions that we've had. And I've grown as a result of my interactions with them. So some of the exist, so it's, that's where the reform comes in. The reform of the culture, a reform of the mindset, and a reform of the systems that we already have in place, and we could take advantage of those right away.
Former Chief Moore, would you give us some insight into some things in regards to this question? Make sure you unmute yourself. Mr. Moore, you still there?
I'm here, how's that now?
Go ahead.
Yes. We here in Springfield, we utilize the American Legion program. It's a program that brings young people together in the state of Illinois to the State Police Academy each year for a whole week. And we have been sending Afro-American youth. And, and you can see the smiles on the mothers' faces as they are delivering their kids to the State Police Academy for weeks' training, ages fifteen through seventeen. We also utilize Boy State to send our young men to Eastern Illinois University, where they learn about the law, learn about government. And also, another program that we deal with here in Springfield is the Rotary Program. Rotary, Rotary is a magnificent program. They, they utilize foreign exchange, we pay for foreign exchange students. But we also have a, every weekend, every year, we send kids to Carlinville, Lake Carlinville, for a, a weekend, and where we bring a diverse group of kids together to learn, let them learn how to interact. So there's so many programs, we just, we just encourage communities to look at the American Legion program, the Rotary program, and, and, and we have had such tremendous success with our kids here in Springfield.
All right. Ms. Brown, would you give us a question from the chat section, please?
Yes, I would love to. So has our community identified more efficient ways to respond to nonviolent emergency calls, such as in response to mental health or substance abuse? Has our community considered having a team of trained mental health and substance abuse professionals on hand to more appropriately address these types of nonviolent emergency calls?
Steve Grubbs?
Yes, the, what, what I would say is, is that at least for the last four years, the city manager and I, a couple of our larger social service healthcare providers have had continuing conversations on finding ways to have some mental health crisis outreach teams put together to be able to address exactly that, those nonviolent calls. What, what I would say to that is, is that we haven't found the resources to be able to put that together. And speaking with both of those, those agencies, those healthcare organizations that already have, you know, employ social workers, crisis intervention workers, you know, the best practice policy that we found is a co-responder model. And so, because on a lot of those incidents, those crisis intervention workers aren't going to go out into the community unless they have a layer of protection, which would be, you know, a police officer or someone. In, in some respects, that causes us to, to not diminish our staffing levels on the police side. Certainly, there's some lower-level interventions that we could likely enter into a partnership with those healthcare workers. That is something that we're still communicating with, that we were, we were meeting right up until, you know, the, certainly the pandemic occurred. The one thing that I will say in addition to that, and it's two parts. One, we could already have a system in place like this, okay? And, and we could have all the state and federal resources that we need to be able to pay for this system. And regardless of whether it reduced our need for police officers or it maintained a co-responder model for our officers and those healthcare crisis workers, we've got to have... we've got to have state and federal assistance, because right now, there are no beds available. And, you know, so, it makes it very difficult, even if you had a best practice model in place, to be able to get someone to a location where they're going to be able to get that longer-term assistance, you know, that they need.
And for that group that's saying in the chat box that they've applied for funding, nonprofits, you have to continue to press in partnership so that you can be a part of the situation and the solution. Dr. Lacy, would you give us a question from the Q and A? And I assure you that we are looking at your questions that you are writing in the chat room. We're not ignoring them, we're just pressing to try to get to as many questions as we have. I have over 40 questions that were sent in previously. We have questions in the Q and A, questions in the chat box. Appreciate your feedback, we appreciate your constructive criticism, but in no way are we trying to do anything but to educate the public. So, your questions will be addressed. And that's why Dr. Flowers said there will be a part two, so that we can get to all of these questions as we can allot time to do that. Dr. Lacy?
Certainly. Again, I'm sorry, my video says the host needs to...
That's okay, go ahead and ask your question.
I will. This, the questions that have come into the Q and A are generally questions for specific people. So, my next question is for Dr. Flowers. And it is, will you consider a town hall that allows concerned citizens to speak about issues of concern related to these matters that are discussed today?
Sure, we most certainly would. However, whoever would like that done would need to come to a branch meeting. We would need to have some idea of what we were holding a town hall to discuss before we held the town hall. We most certainly welcome young people, people of all races, to join the branch, $30 for a year. I don't think there's any other organization where the membership is that cheap and to join with us. So, the answer short term is yes. Branch meetings are held the fourth Tuesday of every month, 6 o'clock. Right now, we're on Zoom.
Please get involved. Reverend Swims, could you give us a question?
Yes, sir. Give me one second.
While he's thinking of a question, I noticed that Michael Coleman is not here. So, for whatever is going on in his life, we will not have his input. Go ahead, Reverend Swims.
Okay. What are the city, what are the City of Carbondale's current practices for civilian oversight and community oversight? What would enhance these procedures? Again, I'll read the question. What are the City of Carbondale's current practices for civilian oversight and community oversight? What would advance these procedures?
Chief Grubbs?
So, if we're talking about civilian oversight boards with subpoena powers or other powers to investigate allegations against police officers, there is not a mechanism in place for that per se. Citizen complaints are received typically at the city manager's level. They're typically received at the police department. We certainly have, and tab on our Department of CarbondalePolice.com website, where you can read about the accommodation and complaint sections and how that process works. Most complaints are required to be supported by an affidavit, that's Public Act, that's the law. They are then investigated typically by a police lieutenant. And then, that review initially is done by the deputy chief. And then ultimately, once the investigation has been completed and all of the points in the complaint or the investigation have been addressed satisfactorily, then certainly, I would sign off on either a finding of proper or improper conduct. Those complaints are spoken about and the city manager is advised regarding those complaints. And certainly, we also report semi-annually and annually to the Human Relations Commission chair regarding the status of and the number of complaints. I actually have a resource document that I have on the table with me to give an example of our 2018 police complaint summary. There were 10 police complaints filed against officers. Two of those were department-initiated. Five were issues where rudeness or the oral conduct, communication skills of the officer was called into question. Three involved complaints where citizens didn't feel like the investigation, the criminal investigation that they called the police department for were addressed appropriately in their view. And we had one complaint that was an issue regarding use of force. And another, that actually covers, you know, those 10 complaints. As a result of those, there were findings of proper conduct on two complaints. There were findings of improper conduct on three complaints. And five of the investigations were administratively closed because the people that initially complained did not want to go through with the entire complaint process. Typically, in those, we go ahead and look into them on a department level to make sure, even in the absence of that complaint, that we don't have any issues there that we need to talk about. So, that report's due to the Human Relations Commission. The pandemic has certainly delayed us in providing the first six-month review for this year. But those numbers that I read to you regarding complaints, the 10 complaints, that was calendar year 2018.
Dr. Flowers, did you want to say something? Dr. Flowers, you're muted.
So, basically, Chief, are you saying that the Human Relations Commission has oversight, civilian oversight? And do they have subpoena power? Or does the police department police itself?
The Human Relations Commission does not have subpoena power. They are the agency by ordinance that we're required to provide a report on regarding the complaints that we receive and investigate throughout the year. Now, there are some complaints, depending on the level of seriousness of those complaints, that we may use an outside agency such as the Jackson County Sheriff's Office or the State Police. If we have any instances of the use of deadly force, then those instances are reviewed by or investigated by the Illinois State Police. And certainly, if we have any conflict of interest or deadly force investigations, the State's Attorney's Office also receives those and reviews those investigations as well.
So, city manager, would the city be open to some type of civilian oversight or a community oversight with subpoena power?
Yeah, I mean, I think if that's what the community wants, Dr. Flowers, I think that a lot of the comments and questions I've heard this evening, and specifically this one, lends itself to maybe a formal community process. And really, what I'm getting at is, every year, the city council does a retreat where we revise our strategic goals. And one of those goals is to create a community policing strategy, a formal strategy. We talk a lot about community policing, but it's time that we have an actual strategy. And certainly, a civilian oversight board could be a part of that. So, you know, hopefully, one of the outcomes of starting these conversations is that we can go on a path, you know, to have a formal strategy in place that will get input from the entire community on ideas of what they want the police department to look like.
If I can interject real quick, as the chair of the Human Relations Commission, that is exactly what our whole purpose is, is what Chief Grubbs had just mentioned, is it's open to the public. We meet the first Monday at 5:00. It's open to the community, you can bring all groups, are welcome. You can bring your concerns to us, we address it there. And then, we make suggestions and comments on behalf of the group and the HRC to the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. To our panelists, you know you originally had four minutes allotted for your closing. I want you to make adjustments in your mind down to two minutes, because we're going to continue on with our questions. And when we get to the closing comment section, I will limit you to two minutes. So, that being said, Reverend Swims, would you come with our next question, please?
Yes, sir. Here it is. Lost my place, hold on one second.
That's okay.
What steps are being implemented to help bridge the social divide that now exists?
Repeat that one again, please.
What steps are being implemented to help divide, to help bridge, I'm sorry, the social divide that now exists?
Can we start with the city manager? Quickly?
Thanks for giving me the hardest question of the evening.
I'll tell you what, let me go to President Haley then.
No, I can go if you want me to.
Go.
Yeah, I, well, that's a broad question. I would say at the local level, I don't know that any community is probably doing enough. I would say that Carbondale, though, is, one of the things we've done for many, many years is we do provide funding and resources to a lot of social service agencies around town that are providing lots of different services for low-income people, education, reading programs, after-school food programs, transit, transportation, all those types of things. That's the best answer I could provide.
Okay, President Haley, what have you seen? You there?
Reverend McGowan, I have a better question, I'm sorry, I found the one I initially was going to add. What is the City of Carbondale doing to address concerns expressed about the racial profiling in Carbondale? I'll read it again. What is the City of Carbondale doing to address concerns expressed about racial profiling in Carbondale?
I want to go to Commissioner Burnside. Is there anything that the commission has talked about in regards to that?
No, I can't say that the commission has had a discussion about racial profiling since I've been a member of the commission.
Okay. Chief Burnside, I mean, I'm sorry, Chief Grubbs?
Almost forgot to unmute, I'm sorry. I guess what I would say is, we do have a policy that prohibits racial bias-based policing practices. Certainly, that addresses, you know, a number of issues regarding the provision of officers being able to take enforcement action regarding somebody's race, their age, ethnicity. And so, those are in place. We currently do have, you know, and have had for the last 25 years, certainly upgraded them over the years, mobile video systems in our police cars that have pre-event recordings that kick in that help, you know, ensure that those things don't occur. But, you know, certainly, they're prohibited from deciding to take law enforcement action based upon any of those demographic profiles. That policy also has a reporting element in it, a duty to intercede and report if another officer would witness, an officer that he felt or she felt was taking enforcement action based on any manner of bias.
Okay. Ms. Brown, could you give us another question, please?
I would love to. Do the Carbondale Police still conduct racial sensitivity training?
Chief?
The short answer is yes, we've been doing that on a citywide basis. So, the city manager may or may not want to weigh in on this question as well. But certainly, our Human Resources Office has a diversity compliance officer that has been charged with, among other things, providing that type of sensitivity training. And this past year, we used a trainer from the State Department of Human Rights that provided that training, not just to the police department, but for all city employees.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
You don't really have anything to add? Yeah, we've been doing it for a few years and we're going to keep doing it.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Lacy, could you give us the next question?
Yes, the next question is kind of a conglomerate. There are several questions about body cameras, so directed towards the police chief in Carbondale in particular. And one of the questions says something to the effect of, with a multimillion-dollar budget, as Carbondale Police Department has, how can you not have body cameras? Another question says, what are the pros and cons of body cameras? Why do you want them or why don't you want them? And so, I think if that could be addressed, that would be helpful to a number of people who have asked questions.
I'm going to start with the money man. Mr. Williams?
Chief and I have talked about this a lot over the years. Actually, when I became city manager four years ago, it was one of the first things I wanted to do. But as I learned more about it and got some advice from some public law offices, I changed my mind a little bit, partly because there's some issues with the statute that require officers to, when they respond to calls, to let everybody know that they're being recorded and that if somebody doesn't want to be recorded for purposes of privacy, they can ask the officer to turn the camera off, which causes some real logistical issues, depending on the type of call response. The other part is, is if you look at our police department, FTEs, we've actually, we've been in a mode of making departments smaller and we've done that for the last few years. One of the things that body cameras do is require more records retention. And departments that have a body cam program generally have to hire an additional person just to handle the FOIA requests, because there's requirements with clouding people's faces out that are in the videos. So, there's a lot of things involved in that. The reason I wanted to do it is because accountability, and not just for our officers, but for the public as well. It's something we're still open to, and as time has went on, I think I'm less worried about the legal risk with some of the statute issues. And as far as budget, it's not as big of investment for the camera themselves as you might think. So, it's not something we're opposed to doing. It's just, there's a, it's, there's a lot of factors that have played into our decision.
Okay. Chief Grubbs?
I agree with everything the city manager said. I, I'm actually in favor of body cameras. That's, you know, the cameras themselves, again, they're affordable. The mobile video systems that we use in our cars has a solution for body cameras that mesh both the camera system for the in-car with a body camera itself. You know, my apprehensions with the program lies simply in the backend storage and having personnel available to manage the system. And that includes an impact, if you read the Body Cam Act, which is a part of state law, the retention requirements and the Freedom of Information Act requests regarding privacy. We are going to need to have a greater involvement with our city attorney's office to make legal determinations to be able to protect the rights of the folks that are involved in those videos that would have privacy rights to ensure that we're not violating those. But just like with the mobile video systems, we were one of the first agencies in the area back in the early to mid-'90s when I was a young police officer. We started with the big VHS tape-type mobile video systems back then. Now, they're all digital. I think it's something that we need to study a little bit harder on to see what the metrics are going to be regarding the number of personnel that we may need. And certainly, Chief Winslow in there in Springfield has done a pilot program there and somebody that I would reach out to to try to get some info. and somebody that I would reach out to, to try to get some information from.
Chief, can I ask you two follow up questions? Are there cameras in cars?
Yes, we, yes, again, to be clear, we've had mobile video system cameras in cars since the mid 90s.
Okay.
And that's every marked, every marked police car.
And, and do you feel like over the last 10 years, you've doubled the amount of officers or you've lost officers? Decreased the amount of officers?
We've, we've lost around 10 police officer positions.
Ten less officers in the last 10 years than?
Not quite the last 10, but yeah.
Well, rough estimate. Okay. All right, Reverend Swims, would you come with the next question, please?
Yes, sir. I think, well, that was already been answered. Here we go. Okay, I'm trying to get through. Hold on a second.
I have one while he's looking.
I've got another.
Go ahead. You guys can go.
With national and local calls to defund the police, I want to know, do you think the police department right now is being called upon to do things that could be done by other agencies in the community? Or that could be done even better by other agencies in the community? And Mr. Williams, you could probably answer some of that as well. Would that be funded from the police department budget? Or would the city have money to provide for some of those services?
There are absolutely services that the police department provides, not just here, but all over the country, that aren't historic law enforcement activities. So as we've seen around the country, cuts and reductions to mental health programs, other social service programs, a lot of that has been pushed off to police departments to handle. So to answer your question, yes, there are activities that can be done. But I would also say, and I'll let Chief speak more to this, he touched on it earlier. In conversations we've had with, with agencies that provide those services, many of the calls that our officers respond to that involve mental health or some other kind of crisis intervention, we can't find people that, that, that feel comfortable responding to those types of calls without the presence of an officer there. Now, could, could an officer in a co-responder model maybe spend less time on scene? Perhaps, but I think the model that we've seen, that the folks we've talked to would still require some police assistance.
Or would the answer be to provide those services before they get to a crisis level?
Absolutely. Yeah, and again, I think that, that the chief and I talked about this, I had, I had a conversation with someone yesterday about it is there's a broader problem that I don't think we're going to solve in Carbondale in terms of cuts to mental health. You know, 50 years ago, there was a half million mental health beds in the country and there's about 50,000 now. Illinois has been one of the leaders in cuts to mental health services over time. So there's a crisis nationally on these types of services and that all needs to be addressed concurrently with this conversation about transforming the way we do policing in America. That's my opinion, at least.
Chief, did you want to enter into that? Chief Grubbs?
I mean, I concur with everything that the manager said. I would reiterate that there has to be local support and we need to have conversations with both, both our states and our federal representatives to provide a state and federal solution to what local municipalities don't have the funds to be able to address. And, and that is where there needs to be some considerable effort put behind that. And, and certainly, and I don't know if Mr. Carr wants to weigh in a little bit or not, but we've been forced in many instances because of the lack of, of beds that are available, because of the lack of resources that are available, to use the criminal justice system, which isn't the path that we want to use, but it's the only path available right now in many circumstances to incarcerate someone and in conjunction with, with their family members because they see and are frustrated that there's no other path available to get them treatment until we can get the state's attorney working with the judges to get some mandated involuntary treatment. And sometimes that takes time, but it helps keep that person safe. And, and hopefully it gets them the, the, the treatment that they need to be able to, to get better from a mental health crisis standpoint.
Dr. Flowers, if I could add real quick, is, is one of the things too, the, the chief just reminded me of is this isn't just for mental health and just for the Carmel Police Department. We're certainly not the only people affected by this. Our healthcare providers, there's a huge cost to, to healthcare. SIA had shared with me about a year ago that parent hospital, believe it or not, 47% of the people that go through their emergency room have an underlying mental health issue. That's a mind boggling number and I can imagine it's probably consistent with Carbondale. So again, I think that speaks to the, the amount of resources that we, we need out there.
Was that you, Chief Moore?
Yes, I'd like to ask the question. Paul?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm interested in reforms. We've seen police departments in cities across the nation or formulating reform policies. I'd like to know what reforms that Carbondale is going to be advancing to reform the police department in, in their city.
And because of time, for those who are viewing after Chief Grubbs answers this, we're gonna have maybe a minute or two for closing remarks. So if there's something you really want to address, panelists, please do so. For those of you viewing, please don't tune out yet. Please continue to type your questions. I, I promise you, the NAACP is going to compile these questions. We're gonna have a part two and if we need to, a part three to address these concerns so we can iron this out. Because as we talk about where do we go, we don't want to tread in mud. We want to move forward. Chief Grubbs?
I would, I would respectfully ask Chief Moore if he could kind of?
What kind of reforms?
I'm not sure just exactly.
What kind of police reforms is the Carbondale Police Department looking at putting in place in regards to the current climate?
Okay, certainly I can speak to the fact that we have undergone a comprehensive review of our use of force policy. Fortunately, our policy is a longstanding policy, goes back all the way to 1989 and, and many, many revisions. And certainly, we've looked to ensure that we, we cover a lot of the what's going on with the national dialogue associated with issues regarding a duty to intercede, to report, once an officer may have to intercede on a use of force situation where they believe it may be excessive. We certainly include a duty to render aid. We use a continuum of force model that the officers are required to only use that level of force based upon the resistance or aggression of those individuals that they're facing in, in that situation. Certainly, we have also pulled our bias-based police reporting prohibition policy. That's going to be reviewed. You know, certainly as a part of our use of force review, we have, we've ran that through the command staff at this point. We've had Zoom meetings with both, with three of our, our, our main community organizations regarding that. And we had representatives of all three of those agencies in the building with this social distance in one of our large training rooms last week to go through page by page and line by line where we're currently at with our use of force policy so that we can, you know, try to, you know, have best practices in there, but best practices that also take into consideration the views of the citizens that we're policing and trying to protect.
All right, Chief Grubbs. We're gonna go ahead and go with our closing remarks. Dr. Burnside? You would limit it to a minute or two?
Okay, thank you, Reverend McGowan. I'd like to thank everyone who came out this evening and asked questions. And unfortunately, a lot of questions did not get answered. And I know some of those questions were important and we should, again, I think as citizens, but also those people who are on boards and commissions and work for citizens in Carbondale should want those questions answered. And so I appreciate the willingness by the NAACP to continue in those conversations. And I think that, that will be important. There's a couple of things I want to address really quickly. And first is, you know, we didn't get a chance to talk about this tonight, but often we hear about officers who have done something wrong. What quickly follows that is that they're a bad apple. It's a rogue officer, bad apple. And I, and I fundamentally say to people, when I do training and when I talk to citizens and to friends, bad apples come from bad trees. And so if you don't address the problem with the tree, you're always going to get bad apples. And so when we, people are trying to convince you that it's a few bad apples, that's a ridiculous analogy. Because where do bad apples come from? Bad trees. So you have to address what's happening in the structure of police in these communities. And so if you're not going to take that on, and I think we all should be taking that on as citizens, as, as citizens, as people who work on commissions, as people who work for the public in every entity across the country, if we're not willing to do that, then we do ourselves and our communities a disservice. If we believe it's a few bad apples, it's bad trees and we need to deal with the issue of trees, not apples. Second thing I like to say is, if you're not getting involved, but you have a lot of questions, there are mechanisms to get involved. Get involved in your community. You can get involved in your community by joining boards, commissions, by joining the NAACP, by joining other civic organizations who are involved in their communities that give more power to your voice when you speak. And I would encourage all citizens to get involved. When I moved to Carbondale 15 years ago, I got involved. And that's why I'm sitting here tonight, because I got involved. And so it's important, I think, to, to again, say to citizens, if you want to see change, get involved and you have an opportunity perhaps to take part in that change. And so the other part of this is, it's important to understand that people want, we talk about defunding the police and it's an important conversation to have. But I think people, some people talk about defunding the police and they want to trim all the branches from the tree. And others who say, well, we don't need to change anything. There's a middle ground here. And we need to find that middle ground. And I think there's been some really good conversations tonight about where that middle ground might be. Where we can divert some resources, where we can create partnerships that help us to find a middle ground where we're doing a better job for our communities. And so it's important. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Williams?
I'll be pretty succinct in that, at first, thanks for including me in this. And I'm really glad that so many people were involved and have interest in this issue. What we've been seeing go on nationally, it's been interesting over the last decade or so that there'll be protest incidents will happen, there'll be protests. It seems like things have been short-lived, but this has been really sustained over a period of time and it's generating momentum and I'm, and I'm glad because I think we have come to a time that not just with policing, but with equity issues nationally that are long overdue for us to address. And so I hope that the people listening here and the folks on the panel will continue to work with us to have solutions for Carbondale and how we can be better. So thanks again.
Mr. Carr? Mike Carr?
Thank you very much for inviting me, making me part of this. I know that I only have a limited amount of time. I'm a lawyer and I take too much time naturally. But one of the things I wanted to talk about, and it's different than, than what I'd prepared, is the perspective about the badge. I don't have one. I respect people that carry one. And I think what happened with George Floyd, it's really important to keep in mind that that badge is authority from the people, not from a supervisor, not to a union. It's authority from the people to protect us. And if you look at it that way and you look and see what happened to Mr. Floyd, you can see why people are outraged. There are people there that are on a police force wearing the authority of the people that chose not to intercede when somebody said he couldn't breathe. There's no supervisory authority that trumps humanity. It's almost ludicrous to have to say, all lives matter. Of course, all lives matter. And I think that police departments need to look very closely at empowering police officers from the first day that they, that they get that badge to recognize that there are situations that may be very volatile, that may cause people to lose their temper. But they have a moral, ethical, and legal obligation to put their hand on the guy's shoulder or the lady's shoulder and tell them, look, take a break, we got this. They have a duty to intercede. You know, so thank you very much for the perspective. I want you to know that I recognize that a lot of this was about the police department, but the state's attorney's office has a role to play too. And I think if you talk about, to anybody in my office, I'm very proud of the, the eight men and women that serve in this office as attorneys and, and the staff that we have. But if you talk to anybody when I first walked in here, I told them that it's not our job to make everybody in the city of Carbondale or in the city of Murfreesboro a felon. What people expect is that we handle the business equitably, fairly, and justly.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Let's move on. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. I, I am excited. I'm excited about what's happening across the state of Illinois. I'm excited about you all adopting the 10 principles and I don't want you to lose focus of those 10 principles. I manage the partnership between the Illinois chief and NAACP. We are a resource. We have traveled the state of Illinois from one end of the state to the other, from one side of the state to the other. Edwardsensky and I, I have been on the ground floor in helping develop these principles. And we are so excited about what's happening. But one of the things that we have, someone asked a question, what progress has been made? We have encouraged the NAACP president and the police chief and the different stated to jointly, jointly plan these meetings, these town hall meetings. And you all are an example of, of, of what's happening with that. And, and we are so excited that you all have, this is our second trip to, to Carbondale. And, and, and to be honest with you all, when we were there, you all were a little bit rough. You were a little bit rough. And, but we, we are seeing progress that you all are working together, chief and the NAACP. And that was what our goal was. That was our goal was to bring you all together. We, we, our goal was to bring a set of tools to the community. And the tools were these 10 principles to help you build trust within your communities. It is a conversation and we understand that all politics is local politics. We know that. But also we are saying that here's a different, now, here's a different set of rules, of behaviors that we all want you all to adopt in order to build trust, to get rid of police brutality, to get rid of racial profiling, to get rid of all the different things that you're having in your community. But these are conversational pieces that start that conversation. And, and these 10 principles have started conversations all across the state of Illinois and we're so proud of that. But also we want you to understand that Illinois chief is a resource for you. The NAACP state, we are a resource for you. We are here to assist you as, as we are doing all across the state. And we want you to move forward with your conversations as, as we move down the road. And accountability, you will build into those accountability. We're not bringing all the answers to you. We're not bringing all the answers to you. That's why we continue to ask for input.
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell?
Hello, finally I get to speak. No questions, but here we go. I really don't, I had it all in my head. I've been sitting here silent so long. The community needs to stay engaged. And today, the next meeting, I feel like it should be way more transparency. Some of the questions I heard, I didn't really hear a real answer to. So I feel like this should continue on. Some of the questions I heard, I didn't really hear a real answer to. So I feel like this should continue on. Um, how to stay engaged in the community is running for office, voting, doing the census. Uh, the only way that this issue will go away and it won't be here again, is like the marching has started slowing down and the, and the stuff has started to quiet. We don't need it to be quiet. We need to keep marching. We need to keep speaking until there is some justice served. Nobody in an elected office should have no peace until we have justice and equality. And that's what I have to say.
Mr. Chief Davis?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm just excited about the possibilities. I see our current situation as opportunity. Uh, I've been fighting for equitable, equitable, uh, equity and criminal justice reform for a long time. As a black police chief, I've been on the inside. I'm, I'm still a black man. The worst experiences that I've had with law enforcement, in both instances, I was a police officer and the people that, that inflicted these things on me knew I was a police officer. One instance, I was actually a police chief. Guy told me he didn't care. That guy ended up going to federal prison later on for other civil rights violations. So this is my passion. I've been fighting for criminal justice reform for a long time. So I have to look at this as opportunity. Law enforcement historically has decided how it's going to, uh, how it's going to enforce laws and protect or, or police black communities without asking for input from black communities. Law enforcement historically has served other communities and police communities of color as a whole. That has got to change, but it's got to be a partnership. We've got to come together and, because there's, there are folks out there that need to get locked up. That's just reality. So we've got to come together as, as people of right mind in law enforcement and community members that are concerned to find out how we best can serve you and do what we need to do without policing our entire community. So I'm excited about that. And I just think that there's a lot that we can do together and we're, we're better, stronger together than we are apart. Thank you for having me today.
President Haley?
This has really been a good discussion and thank you all for what you do. However, there were some things that troubled me when I heard about you not having residency requirement. If you can't live among the people that you police, then you need to go somewhere else. Residence requirement is so important for us. If you need to move that from seven, eight miles to 10 miles, I realize Carbondale is a lot smaller than Springfield, but it's important that if they are policing our communities, that they live among the communities in which they police. That brings about respect. The other thing is the NAACP is proactive, not reactive. We are not Black Lives Matter. We are not the Sierra Club. We are the oldest civil rights organization in the world for a reason, because we stand up and we fight, even when you don't hear us fighting. Damn it, we're fighting behind those closed doors for you. We're fighting to change laws. We're fighting for elections. We're fighting for your census. Please complete your 2020 census. People have said, I don't want the government to know where I am. If you received your stimulus check, they know where you are. So make sure that you're completing your 2020 census. Illinois is up to lose congressional districts in seats. Illinois, we need those seats. We need you not only to register to vote, but on election day to make sure you show up and you vote. You vote those people out like the young lady said before, your voice is your vote and your vote does count. So thank you very much for having us here today.
We have a great deal of comments in the chat room and a lot of those are stemming from people not being forthright. We must understand, and I know that's not a ground for the moderator to give remarks, but we have to understand that we have to be clean and clear and consistent about what's going on. You can't fake people out. You can't act like something's happening that's not happening. Chief Davis talks about his experience. I've lived in Carbondale almost 30 years and I've been pulled over at least 15 times just because I'm black. Things have to change. And for all of those that are giving those comments from the Ashley's to the Nicholas, to the Emerald, to the Mitchell, to the Julian, please contact Ms. Ms. Maxwell. Please get involved. Please let your voice be heard. Do not gripe and complain behind the scenes and saying NAACP is not doing anything. We can't do anything if you don't partner up with us and bring your voice to the table. And I promise you, I guarantee you, I feel like Ms. Maxwell is the woman for the job to lead criminal justice change in Carbondale, but she needs your voices to be a part of this particular situation so that reform and change can take place. We're gonna close with Dr. Flowers, the president of the local branch of the NAACP.
Thank you so much, Reverend McGowan, and thank you, President Haley, on behalf of the state NAACP. Uh, thanks to all of our presenters and panelists. Thanks to our sister branch members, including nearby President Tyrone Coleman, president of the Alexander Proleski County Branch NAACP. Thanks to, uh, the Carbondale Public Library and technicians who've been working behind the scenes, Diana Brawley Sussman and Jennifer Robertson. We couldn't have done it without you. A special thanks for joining us this evening to the SIU president, Dr. Dan Mahoney, and chancellor, Dr. Austin Lane, and welcome to the Carbondale community to you both. The Carbondale Branch NAACP stands ready and willing to work with the city, the police department, the state's attorney office, the university, and all who call Carbondale home and who dare to envision and work towards a more equitable Carbondale. We have a couple of closing slides. In closing, we want to invite you to an upcoming, uh, COVID-19 chat. Uh, we also want to invite you to come and join with us as Reverend McGowan said, our branch meets the fourth Tuesday of each month. You can go to our Facebook page, Carbondale Branch NAACP. You can email me at carbondalebranchnap at gmail dot com. If you are interested in working to plan the second town hall as well as serve on the panel, email us and we can get that done. I heard our city manager say tonight that he is interested in what the Carbondale community wants our department to look like. So it's up to us to work together, not work against each other. Good night and we not only hope to see you at the second town hall, we hope to see you and to work with you in planning it. Also, Chief Davis has shared with us a television interview that he did addressing a lot of the issues that we talked about this evening. And we will have the link to that interview up on our Facebook page. Thank you all again. Good night.
Good night.